Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you to our Board of Education meeting tonight. To access translation, please click, please click on the icon, globe icon below on the screen. Or at the John, you can go to the corner of the room to get translation. Para acceder a traducción pueden apretar el botón del globo en Zoom. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we're here to listen to any public comment there might be on our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we'll be discussing tonight are conference with legal counsel and regarding anticipated litigation, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, and conference with labor negotiators. Staff, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, we'll back and reconvene at 6:30 tonight. Thank you so much. To our board meeting tonight, to access translation, please click on the globe icon below. Or at the John, you may go to the corner of the room to get translation. Para acceder a traducción pueden apretar el botón del globo. O en the John pueden ir a la esquina del gimnasio para acceder a traducción. We are coming back from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. Public comment has recently changed. We have opportunities of non-agenda items in person through Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last thirty minutes. The allotted time for each speaker is two minutes. If you're attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding or time as restitution of speakers is permitted. The public will also have an opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff's presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have ten minutes per item and one minute per speaker at that time. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for our land acknowledgement, we recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chechenia Muekma Karkan Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Dr. Hurst, could you please do roll call?
Absolutely. Thanks, sir. President Gonzalez-Hoy.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening. I'm present.
Trustee Philip. Absent. Trustee Christian.
Good evening. Good evening, President.
Trustee Barone.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Santos.
Good evening, President.
All present except for one absent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Now we're going to move to our report notification from closed session. Dr. Hurst, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Yes, sir, we do. Board voted to approve the special education settlement agreement in OAH case number 2022-090977. The vote was as followed. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Christian, yes. President Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Okay, public, now we're going to move to public comment. As mentioned, we have changed public comment. We are going to go one person at the John, one person on Zoom, back and forth to make sure that we allow everybody to speak. We have thirty minutes for public comment now, and the comments should be on non-agenda items. If you have a comment on agenda items, please wait until that item comes forward. The public will have a chance to make public comment after each of the speaker, each of the staff's presentations. Do we have public comment from the John?
Our first public comment is Zalon Harrison.
Good evening, board. Thank you. Thank you for showing up today and serving our children. I'm here today to welcome all the Black children that came out to express what's been going on, some of their concerns, and some of their successes, and some of their challenges, and also some solutions that we can use to make their educational experience here in our district a much better one. So tonight, you guys will be hearing from our students and our parents. And please, board, really listen and follow up with our people. We are trusting that you guys are here to serve us and that you guys are going to do your part. So can all the trustees make sure they follow up with parents, find out where they're at, so we can get some solutions and get some things done where our children are reading and doing math in a safe environment? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rodney Brown.
I'm sorry. Before we go to Mr. Brown, we are going to Zoom, and then we're going back to. So we're switching back and forth. Mr. Brown, you will be next if you're here.
We don't have any online on Zoom.
Thank you. With some, we can just continue on the John.
Rodney Brown.
Oh, man. I'd like to say good afternoon, board. This is Rodney Alamo Brown, community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. I want to talk about the situation that's occurred at Ham's Junior High School on February 7th, 2023. And as you all have the information in front of you and also email this information to you, I want to state for the record what transpired with the young lady. She was going to be a victim of a planned attack. These text messages circulated to collaborate what transpired on campus. According to the message, there was a thread created to recruit others into beating up the Black girl, which is premeditated. It's a society in which we live in where students are sending messages to recruit others into beating another human being. This is what led to what we saw on the news. What we saw in the video was a parent coming to the school to defend her daughter as the assault was taking place in the bathroom. Sadly, the mother's actions were seen on a video being made by one of the students, as it was shown on KTVU, and has garnered and swayed the public's opinion. There's a second video that indicates that the Black girl was being held against her will as the exit path in the bathroom was blocked by two Latino girls. The Black girl went into the bathroom stall to protect herself from being jumped or beaten up. She had a backpack and purse on, so there's no way she was the aggressor when the video clearly shows she was frightened during the whole course of action. Yes, we know these things shouldn't be happening on any of our campuses. However, it seems to be a growing trend where Black students are being beaten or jumped. We, as parents, can't sit idle, and we must demand better safety on campuses. So it truly appears that this premeditated situation was planned out. As you see according to the text, this beating was supposed to be videotaped as well. Sadly, Latino girls' efforts were thwarted and foiled as two of the girls fled from the bathroom when Miss Destiny came out the bathroom stall ready to fight. As we've seen with the video, was chopped up and made to make the mother and the Black girls look as though they're the aggressors and the troublemakers, when in fact, the girls were followed into the bathroom by the Latino girls. I'm not saying the behavior of the mother is acceptable, however, I clearly understand the residual effects of her behavior and why she responded in this manner and what she did. What she heard.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, everybody. There's no more public comment. Board, we're now going to move to the next item. We were going to have our request to address the board from the Richmond High School Black Student Union, but they asked us to postpone, so they'll come back either at the next board meeting or the following. We do have a request to address the board from Zalon Harrison. Ms. Harrison, this is your time. You have ten minutes. Thank you.
There was a mix-up on how this was supposed to go. So right now, I'm going to give the majority of my time to the El Cerrito BSU, so they can address the board because it was a mix-up. It was supposed to be both BSUs addressing the board, not just Richmond Highs. So I'm asking a question. Is that going to be a problem?
So you're saying that they had a request to address the board as well?
Yes, they're on there with my name, but I was, until I was just told that I couldn't. It was just supposed to be just me. That's what I just was just told. I didn't know that when we were. I thought it was going to be able to be me, and just as long as I used that time, it was those people. So it was a misunderstanding.
Well, since it was a misunderstanding on both parties, I'd say why don't you and the student speak? As long as you stay within the ten minutes, it's fine.
Okay. Demetrios, they have a slide presentation. Are they able to show that?
Yes, if you just give us one minute, we'll pull it up. There you go. Now it's up. Is that the presentation?
We can start. Hi, my name is Jayvon Bows, and I would like to present the ECHS Black Student Union. Next slide. I would like to present the executive board members. President Genesis, the other president, Justice, the vice president, Tree, the vice president, the other vice president, Jasmine, the secretary, Siona, the other secretary, Anaya, the treasurer, Imani, and the other treasurer, Anaya, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm sorry, and the director of entertainment, Jayvon Bows.
The ECHS Black Student Union focuses on empowering Black students and giving back to the community through service projects. Here are some of the highlights from this year's service projects and activities that were coordinated by ECHS BSU students. Next slide, please. So the first project we did was the NCAA eligibility form, where San Jose State's Director of Track and Field Coach Charles Bryan volunteered his time to come to speak, come speak to Elsera High athletes about NCAA eligibility and the recruiting process. Next slide, please. Then we also went to the Black Panther Contra Forever Show and Elsera Rito High BSU members up to watch Contra Forever together as a group.
Hello, y'all. I'm Justice. I'm the president. Here we have our Contra Costa Costa, Contra Costa College Symposium that we held earlier this school year. We had it at Contra Costa, and basically, we just had a lot of Black speakers and speakers in general come talk to some of the students, come hand out some of the money, just put us on game, give us a lot of information. And yeah, it was a great experience overall. This is probably one of our first events that BSU held this year. And yeah, that's pretty much all I got to say about this. Can we get to the next slide, please? These are other pictures from the symposium. Yeah, it was a great experience. All other BSUs were also there, so it wasn't just EC. Great experience all throughout, though. Next slide, please.
All right, here we are at our high school homecoming parade. This is when we had a lot of other clubs, including, you know, of course, us, the BSU. There, we marched on the homecoming parade. Yeah, it's really all about it. Next slide. All right, here we are again at the Project Santa. This is a fundraising event that we hosted at our high school where we had different teachers and students and parents donate presents to us so that we could go and deliver them to children at the Niestram Elementary School. All right, next slide. This is just a couple more pictures of us at the Niestram Elementary School. All right, next slide.
Hi, Jayvon, again. This is the glowy independent living Thanksgiving event. ECHS BSU students participated in a donation drive and Thanksgiving community events with Glow's Independent Living and founder, Ms. Tiffany Powers. Oh, next slide, please. And these are some pictures of us giving out the food and the other stuff that we were doing. Next slide. And some more pictures that we were doing. Next slide.
This is a couple of the executive members at one of the more recent board meetings where we came to come and listen to one of our executive members of BSU talk about the racial injustices that we face at Elsera High, more specifically, the racial injustices that she had to deal with on her own. Next slide.
This is ECH BSU participating in the first district-wide Black History Month Spirit Week. Next slide. First, we had Melanated Monday, wearing all different shades of brown. Next slide. Next, we have Polo Professional Day, which is when you dress professional. Next slide. College Gear Day, where you dress with your favorite college gear, t-shirts, sweatshirts. Next slide, please. Here's Throwback Thursday, where you dress from any decade. Next slide. And last, we have Blackout Friday, where you dress in all black.
This is a couple of pictures from one of our more recent, what do you call, Black Student Union meetings where we had a former Black Panther Party member show up to discuss some of the hardships that he faced in his life. This meeting took place pretty recently on Monday, February 13th. Next slide.
So as y'all know, Valentine's Day just passed, so we was there with some special needs kids from El Cerrito making cookies, and we passed them out to some of the students for free. Just trying to show some hospitality around the school, you know, get people involved, know what BSU and ESN is there for them, trying to help out as much as possible. So yeah, this was just on Tuesday, Tuesday. All right, next slide, please.
We also attended the Black College Expo that was in Oakland, where we had the chance to get more information about schools, and a couple of our members actually got accepted on the spot. So, next slide.
This is the Special Olympics. ECHS hosts the district Special Olympics and faculty activities and basketball tournament. Next slide. Those are some pictures that when we was playing with the kids, doing activities with them. Next slide. There are some more slides, I mean, more pictures of them having fun and enjoying themselves. Next slide. And those are the pictures that the people that were hosting get. Next slide. And there you go.
So all that to say, we do have some more events that are planned, such as this Friday's first annual Black History Month Assembly at Elsera High. We also have the first Black Youth Summit, as well as the Avenue Alee Dance Production Company Study Trip to UC Berkeley and the DC Black College Tour Study Trip. We're also going to have an end of the year barbecue celebration and our Black graduation in June.
Yo, we thank y'all so much for looking at these things that we were doing with BSU throughout the year. We just want y'all to know that we've been growing and trying to strive as much as possible this year, try to get as much done, help out as many other communities as possible, show that BSU is thriving, show that BSU is strong, and BSU is best together, you know. Show that BSU is something that is a collective, and all Black students, all students are welcome to help. And yeah, we thank y'all for your time, thank y'all for viewing and all that.
Also to add, with all these events, we haven't really gotten any support from our own administration. So we hope as our new events go on that we get support from the district. Just an acknowledgement, because our own administration has not acknowledged us. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. On behalf of the board, I just want to thank you. And Ms. Harrison, Ms. Harrison, we will, if you could email us to the next meeting, you can also get some time. Happy to accommodate that, okay? Yeah, of course. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sharing that because we do have a lot of challenges in our district for Black students, but they showed some solutions. We are offering, our district is offering BSUs that are doing, these children are doing a lot of this work with one BSU advisor. So we need the board to support the good things that are happening in our district, too. Because you guys will hear tonight some things that are not good that's happening in our district. So here's a highlight of what some Black youth in our district are doing, and they're not violent. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, and our BSU students really appreciate you. Board, we're going to move to agenda review and adoption. There are a couple changes. We are removing the safety plans. They're being tabled to the next meeting. It's in consent. And then we are, I'm asking to move F1, the DLI discussion prior to the action items, since we have a lot of people waiting for that item.
President Gonzalez-Hoy, if I could just make a point of order really quick. I was trying to raise my hand before you moved on.
Sure, what's your point of order?
There are some parents who are from Stewart, who would actually like, who wanted to make public comment, and it's not on the agenda item, which is not Stewart. And they turned in their forms, but they weren't able to speak.
Is it about the DLI program at Stewart?
It is about.
Then that's for the DLI item. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move F1 before action items. I'm sorry, can you turn on your mic so I can hear?
Mr. President, what item under consent were you were moving?
C13, thank you. Thank you. Much faster. So we're tabling C13, and then we're moving F1 before action items after the sprint and report. Board, is there any other changes? Okay, without objection. Oh, yes, trustee Phillips.
Can I just ask for clarification? When you're asking, are there any other changes? Does that include consent items, polls, or?
No, I'm sorry. I should have waited for the consent item for when we got the consent. I confused this myself. So it's just for the discussion and action items. Okay, without objections. If there are no objections, can we approve the agenda? So moved. Thank you. Okay, well now we're moving to the minutes from the meeting, January 18th, 25th, 31st, and February 1st. Board, are there any changes to the minutes? Okay, if there are no objections, we'll approve the minutes. So moved. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to African American History Month school presentations, which we're very excited about. Board, first, we're going to hear the presentations, and then we're going to go down and take some pictures with our wonderful students and pass out some certificates. Dr. Hurst, I think you're introducing this item.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We're so excited for these students to come and present to us around African American History Month. We want to introduce the teacher and just have the teacher stand up. She doesn't have a presentation, but Ms. McCray from Coronado, can you stand up just to be acknowledged? Thank you for being here with your students, ma'am. And first, we're going to hear from Maima Mutan, and she has a poem that she is going to share. And I do have a mic. Can we get this mic to her as well? The mic is coming down. And maybe if you could stand right in the center so we can all see you, Maima. Can you come right here in the center front? We're so glad you're here, Maima.
I woke myself up, ain't got a alarm clock. Thug in a dirt cold basket, 'cause ain't nobody washed my uniform. Brushed my hair and teeth in the dark, 'cause the lights ain't on. Even got my baby sister ready, 'cause my mama wasn't home. Got us both to school on time to eat a good breakfast. Then, when I got to class, the teacher fuss, 'cause I ain't got a pencil.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Maima. We appreciate you. Next, we're going to have Imani Adure. If you can come down and right into the middle as well.
I too sing America. I'm the darker brother, and then when company comes over, they send me to go eat in the kitchen. But I laugh and eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow, I'll be at the table. When company comes, nobody will dare to tell me to go in the kitchen. Besides, when they see how beautiful I am, they'll be ashamed. I too am America.
Outstanding. And then next, we're going to have Jade Duwan come up. And then also Jonathan Loezo, and they're going to do an illustration, role play, to share what there's a little bit more about. Black here, so we have another mic. Can we pass this mic down to them as well? Hold on, we have another mic coming down for you.
My name is David Richardson, and I grew up in a small town in North Carolina.
And I'm Mary James. I grew up in the same small town in North Carolina.
When I was a kid, my mom would sometimes take us to Woolworth for a special treat. We sat at the seat at the counter. Woolworth was one of the many large five-and-dime department store chains with lunch counters. You could sit there and have something to eat.
My mother took my sister and me to Woolworth's to go shopping, but we weren't allowed to sit at the counters. No one in my family was allowed to sit at the counter back in 1960.
That time in American history is what this play is about.
You see, even though David and I grew up in the same town, we.
We didn't know each other back in 1960.
The South was segregated.
That meant in the eyes of the law in the South, African Americans and white people were not equal.
And in our day-to-day lives, that meant that as an African American, we couldn't drink from the same waterfronts as white people. There were so many rules back then. We couldn't use the same restrooms. And in our day to day lives, that meant that as an African American, we couldn't go to the same schools as white children. There were so many rules back then. We couldn't drink from the same water fountains or use the same restrooms as white people either.
There were signs all over the town that told people where they could and couldn't go. You, you see big signs that read whites only.
That was just the way life was. It wasn't easy. We weren't happy about it and we knew it wasn't fair. But every day, we knew that Dr. Martin Luther King was out there fighting for change and equal rights for African Americans. And when I say fight for change, I don't mean violent fighting. Dr. King led peaceful marches. He believed we could peacefully change the segregated South.
I didn't really take, I didn't really take notice of the segregated town we lived in and I definitely didn't know about Dr. King. I didn't know what Dr. King stood for until one day, my mother took us to Woolworth in February nineteen sixty. And then my life started to change.
Every, everyone's life started to change.
I was twelve years old and I was twelve years old in nineteen sixty and I wasn't called David. I was called Davy.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And what we're gonna do, we're gonna have all of the, um, as the board president said, we're gonna take a picture with you, Ms. McCray. If you could bring all your students up here and then director of communications, if we can come take a picture, we'd appreciate it. We also have certificates we're gonna pass out to them, Ms. McCray. Yours says West Contra Costa Unified School District. Would like to thank Ms. McCray from Coronado Elementary for your leadership at today's February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting. To honor African American History Month, your work is greatly appreciated and assigned both by the board president and myself. And for all the students, you're gonna be receiving a certificate that says West Contra Costa Unified School District. Would like to thank all of you and it has your name on it from Coronado Elementary for your participation in today's February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education meeting to honor African American History Month. Keep up the great work.
Board, I'm gonna call for a five minute recess uh, and we'll come back. So we'll come back at seven eleven, please. Thank you so much. There were, as trustee Phillips mentioned earlier, there were a couple of parents that wanted to speak about Stewart Elementary School that have not, that does not have to do with the item later. Um, and there were, I think there's six of them. And then there were three parents who wanted to also make public comment earlier that were unsure of when to make public comments. So if it's okay with the board without objection, we'll allow the nine public comment and then we'll continue with the agenda. Is that okay? Oh, yes. And uh, we forgot to take one picture um, with the El Cerrito BSU. So after the public comment, we'll go down, take a picture and then we'll come back and continue the agenda. Okay? Uh, trustee Santos.
Does this also include any other people on Zoom? Could I see like a hand raised, Ms.?
Um, good question. Yes, it will be the one person on Zoom as well. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, trustee Santos. So it'll be ten total. Twelve and it keeps growing. Okay, we will start with the, we'll, we'll go with the twelve and that's it because we do have, that's the time allotted. Um, and we do have to move to our agenda items, which a lot of people are waiting for. So uh, after the twelve, we'll continue. We'll go down for the picture. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Katia Arasate.
Hello. So my name is Katia Arasate and I have a first grader at Stewart and an incoming TK student. Stewart is not my homeschool, but I chose it because of finding out they had a DLI program. I chose Stewart because they also have a K through eight school. In kindergarten, he learned so much in a span of one year through the program. We knew about our kinder teacher leaving before the end of the year, but I did not anticipate for there to still be a teacher by the next year. Then to find out that Kinder was not the only teacher missing at the DLI program. After that, I learned that the DLI program is not expanded to the eighth grade, but changed to Spanish elective by sixth grade. This is not what I expected when choosing a school that was DLI K through eight. Hearing that we lose more teachers from our program could possibly affect DLI even being done at Stewart is not something I ever thought about. I would, I would be worried about. I know there are many other DLI schools in our county, but our school seems to not get recognition about possibly losing the program. My son is involved in different sports around the Pinot Hercules Rodeo area and have met many families that have never heard about Stewart and/or that they offered DLI at the school. Many also say that they would have liked to have their child in the DLI if they knew about it. My way of finding out about it is different than other people. And many people hear these things through where their mouth or advertising, which we don't really have. Being able to have more families about, telling more families about our program would not only benefit our school, but would benefit our community as a whole. However, now feel bad talking about our school at times because of our low teachers. Teacher security should be one of the last things a student should worry about. If we keep Stewart as a full DLI, it would give proper security in the program. Being able to find and hire a teacher should be done year round, not just during one time. Many parents have come together this past year to not only raise their concerns for their children, but our school as a whole. We have had one mom step up this year to get emergency credentials and is teaching both kinder and third grade. This should not be something that needs to happen to our students or our parents. We as parents at Stewart have began talking more and are willing to not only help with hiring process, but also advertise our school to not only add more students, but possibly let teachers know that we are here and welcome everyone. Hearing that some schools get teachers before us, hearing a waitlist to be added to DLI from other schools and meanwhile, our school having low numbers is not equality.
Our next public comment is Nicholas Yanes.
Todos mis pollitos, Nicolas, Noah and Natalia.
Hello, my name is Nico. I have been at Stewart dual language and permission. Immersion, immersion. Since Kinder third grade was hard, we didn't have a teacher having class. And my speech, and my speech classics in different rooms and different people. Compromised.
Compromised.
My routine, which I depend, depend on, based on my IEP, my mom, because our teach, our teachers. However, it is important and this is, doesn't happen again. I have a brother in first grade A. And A. Sister who deserves a teacher in each grade level, please find our teachers. Meis, anumus. Meisen lo mejor gracias.
So Mama, at the beginning, she said, my little three babies. And at the end, the students said, my friends, I wish you the best.
Our next public comment is Yareli Bañuelos.
Hello, my name is Yareli. I have a first grader at Stewart Elementary in Pinot. I'm here tonight, I am here tonight to demand equity for all of our students. WCCUSD needs to prioritize improving our schools, our education. I want to be proud of where my daughter attends school. I want to build community for our children. We cannot continue to fail our children by giving mediocre resources. There needs to be more support in the DLI program. Retain teachers, value them, pay them more. They deserve it. They are shaping our little ones' brains. Our children at WCCUSD deserve quality education. I want to stay in this district. I don't want to run away from it, but not knowing if our children will have a teacher next year or the years to come is scary. I want to stay in this district. I know we can do better. Let's do better. Let's be proud of WCCUSD.
Our next public comment is Marisol Medina.
Good evening. My name is Marisol Medina. My daughter Eleanor is a first grader at Stewart at the DLI program. Um, I am used to giving a lot of evaluations to my staff. And I thought I'm giving you an evaluation, but I think sugar caught in it. At your level, it's an insult to your role. So let me just be very clear. And like we said in Spanish, a calzon quitado y sin pelos en la lengua. And if you need any uh, translation, as a DLI teacher. So let me tell you that you have failed in your roles at this board. When our kids came to school without a teacher, you failed to every single student, every single day that they showed up. Not only at Stewart, but at every single school that you're supposed to be taking care and supporting. When you forgot to invite Stewart to the school fair, you failed not only to the Stewart community, to the Pinot community and to the potential students that could have come to our school if they find out early. And when you stop that DLI pathway to El Cerrito High School and you failed to include Stewart, you also failed to every student. So let me tell you, now that you know what you failed at, what are you gonna do about it? Cause that is really the real question. When I talk to my staff and I tell them where do they need to improve, they should know now what they, was their next step. So I'm gonna tell you what the next steps should be. You need to expand the hiring window specifically for DLI teachers. And if you have not started yet, you're late.
Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Rebecca Ponce Larson.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Ponce Larson. I'm the mom of two children in the DLI program at Washington and Coromatsu. I'm also the teacher librarian here at Dejong. Um, the DLI program at Washington, Coromatsu and El Cerrito means a lot, not only to the parents, but also to the students and educators of the program. When my oldest daughter entered into the Washington program in the fall of two thousand fifteen as a kindergartner, we were so excited for her. My husband and I know how important it is to be bilingual. And just like all the DLI parents, we committed to it for the long haul, starting in kindergarten. We committed to stay with the program through middle and high school. Both of my daughters in the DLI program care about learning Spanish and they are proud to speak Spanish. However, they need more instruction in Spanish that will continue through their schooling, reinforcing and enhancing their skills. For my seventh grader at Coromatsu and her peers in the DLI program, it is incredibly disappointing to be told that the program will end soon and her cohort of peers and classmates in the program will be scattered throughout the district, not even knowing where they would go and and it feels like all of their hard work in learning Spanish is tossed to the wayside. Now is the time to bolster this program, not let it wither away. Does the district care about the dual immersion program in high school? It appears that they don't care about this commitment that they made when our children first entered into this program. Instead, the district has deceptively ended the program without any conversations or discussion. This abrupt decision has left parents and students dismayed and distressful. Our kids deserve better than this. Please allow the DLI community into your conversations and decision-making process and please stay true to your original commitment and promise to our children. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rio Ponce Larson.
Hello, my name is Rio. I'm in the fourth grade at Washington Elementary. I want to go to El Cerrito High School because I want to continue the dual immersion program. I want to get better at Spanish. I want to. I want to get better at Spanish. I want to communicate better with my grandma. Yo quiero mejorarme a comunicar con mi abuelita. Gracias.
The same, the student just repeated, "I want to communicate with my grandma."
Our next public comment is Becca Guerrero.
Just to make you aware, I need three minutes because there is a delay in the interpreting portion, if that's all right with the board.
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Becca Guerrero. I'm a parent of two kids at Coramatsu and Washington. Out of all of this, it has become very clear that the district, to this day, refuses to call it a DLI program reduction, but rather calls it a change in transfer preference, and to strengthen the K through A program for the DLI pathway. Discussion topics from the DLI analysis meeting on the ninth, and the presentation that was included in the agenda for tonight, unless there has been changes made at the last minute, shows that there has been, that we have been ignoring a very serious problem since the district knew on December 8th, and that they plan to remove El Cerrito High School from the DLI K through 12 pathway. And the parents attended this meeting to hear from them directly, but they chose to brush aside our concerns. I am here to plead with the school board to demand transparency and the truth for what the plan is. We must know what the plan is. Why has the district agreed to expand the DLI program while also simultaneously cutting the program? We would like to know who is authorizing the decisions or who is taking responsibility for cutting the DLI program at the high school. How are we respected to trust the credibility of the district when we have not yet seen any actual data evidence of DLI current decisions? Or of the changes that led to these decisions being made? How can we trust the district that they will continue to protect the DLI when they are proposing conflicting DLI policies? How can we trust the district when they have failed to employ appropriate hiring practices for the DLI position since 2019? What was done prior to this year to prevent the dismantling of the program at El Cerrito High School? And most importantly, how could this district do this without any regard to the impact it would have on the DLI community? I ask that we leave tonight with some answers. Be real with us. We deserve transparency, and we deserve the truth. We cannot have a successful DLI program without collaboration, true collaboration between the community and the district and the board. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Shalon Santiago. Shalon Santiago.
Thank you. We have all these kiddos over here. They're showing their shirts. They have a message for you guys. Please take a look at their shirts. Hi, I'm Shalon Santiago, mom of Christian and Ava at Stewart. I'm here again tonight to talk to you about DLI. I'm not going to yell at you tonight, as it seems to not work. Tonight, I'm coming to you with solutions. Please get out a notebook, get out your pencil, and let's go to school. The biggest issue is teacher vacancies, especially in DLI. The first step is to put out the ad on EdJoin now, like tonight, tomorrow, this week. Don't wait for spring or summer. Over expect how many teachers we will need, so we can be sure to fill the vacancies. Let's be creative. Let's reach out to Latin America. Help provide work visas. Look outside the scope. Don't just do what you've been doing because it doesn't work. The other issue is low enrollment, low enrollment of schools. Well, first, how can we expect to increase our enrollment if we cannot fill the vacancies for the teachers? They go hand in hand. Now, let's get students. Advertise. I'm not just talking about education fairs that Stewart was not invited to. Do real marketing, hire a videographer, and make a video about our schools, what we offer. Put it on social media. You'd be surprised how much social media really works. Advertise DLI. It's a program worthy of advertising. The last issue I'll discuss is inequality in WCCUSD, with DLI in particular. The fix here is to encourage schools to collaborate. You have schools that run great, like Washington, for example. They know what they're doing. But Stewart, we're separate. We're the little school on the hill that's always forgotten. We all have the same goal, so shouldn't we all work on it? Open the pathway up to Stewart, so we can have a strong and full pathway. Open up the conversation, so we can all work together and collaborate. These are your fixes. Please listen.
Our next public comment is Salatiel Blewett.
Good evening. Today will be the second time I spoke in front of a large crowd. Earlier today, I had an assembly where I was the host at Fairmont Elementary for our Black History Month event. And there, Councilmember Carolyn Westinger was our keynote speaker, and it was a very good day. So today, I come before you as the AIPAC lead. And I only got elected back in December, so I've had a very short time. But I want to share some qualitative data that I've learned, because we all know the quantitative data as far as how our black kids are doing in our schools. So back in November, we had a Black Parent Parent Walk Through at El Cerrito High School. There, I met the BSU that spoke in front of you today. And we discussed the use of the N-word in literature at the high school. And I heard stories where girls were crying when the teacher said the N-word. And they asked the teacher to stop, and he continued. So being that it's Black History Month, and I'm not trying to challenge mice and men or to kill a marking bird, but what I would ask you is to consider, maybe, just maybe, since it's Black History Month, maybe we could have an African-American history class as an elective in our high school. To my understanding, we have a World War II history class as an elective. Now, I'm not sure how we're going to get this done, but I would like the board to consider working with me and AIPAC to make it a reality for our black kids. I think this will be a very positive impact on our black students and is in line with the AIPAC resolution that we set out to do. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Brian Coleman.
Thank you, esteemed board members, for this time. And I definitely want to make sure everybody in here is appreciated for being here tonight. It's not a really easy thing to come up here and complain to people who have listened. And I'm only saying that because I am your OESA liaison representative. I'm also an ASAT executive member. I'm also an ASAT representative for Sheldon and an SSC member. Plus, I have two businesses and one entrepreneurial job I'm doing for kids at another school. And I said all that to let you know, there's anything is possible once you put your mind to it. And I don't think you guys believe that. These BSU students should be commended. Every student that came up here and spoke to you tonight should be revered. Their school lunches should be way more better than what you see them eating. I don't see none of you people ever going to eat none of that school lunch, because you know it's crap. And honestly, it's not just the food. I've been to different schools. I've walked around and looked at the condition out. Each one of these kids are getting treated. There's no cohesiveness amongst the district at all. Now, if I'm able to do so much by myself with a good upbringing and two-parent home, and I know a lot of people are struggling with that, where they don't have that. So I want to offer you a little bit more of a solution. It starts with you, Dr. Hurst, specifically. I still haven't had one meeting with you in two years, except for one video meeting. It's not that I haven't tried. It's just trying to get in contact with you is really non-existent. Maybe I should go back to carrier pigeons or something, because that might work better. Now, I don't want to point any more fingers, but I do want to say this. Parents, you guys have all the power, not them. You guys need to know that. Don't sit here and let them run our meetings and make it seem like we're not nothing on this planet. Yeah, I could use other words, but I'm not. If you don't rise up and come together, they will run this district into the ground.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. And you can call the next person on Zoom.
Our next public comment is on Zoom, and that is Mr. Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Bean. I teach fourth and fifth grade at Shannon Elementary. I've been at Shannon for almost eight years, and the district for almost nine years. I voted today in my union's tentative agreement with the district. I was very happy to see this finally come to a resolution. The salary raise is adequate, though not great. I'm worried that in another year or so, we will again be losing staff to other districts. So I hope that the staff and superintendent are making a plan for how to increase salaries further in coming years. I'm also disappointed that this process took so long. I spent a lot of time working with my union to prepare for a strike, and I would have rather spent that time doing extra preparation for teaching. I hope that the district looks for a way to make budget negotiations more conciliatory in future years, so that we don't have to do things the way we did them over the last 12 months. I also want to thank all the people in our community who stood up for their students, for their children, and for teachers. I know that I saw many of my students at the rally at the board meeting on January 25th, and I appreciate all of them who came. There is more to be done, and I hope that the district makes finding money for staff important in the next few months, because the students need teachers. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all the people who spoke and our Zoom speaker as well. Okay, board, we're going to go back to the floor. We're going to take a picture with our wonderful students from the El Cerrito BSU in front of the TV over here. So if our wonderful students could come up also on the floor, we'll come to you, okay? Okay, everybody, we're going to continue. Trustees, if you could please come back up. Okay, everybody, thank you so much for your patience. We're going to move now to our consent items. Board, as mentioned earlier, we are tabling item C13, our site safety. Our site safety plans to a board meeting in March. I'm sorry, we've, we've, we've moved past public comment at this point. Thank you. Okay, if you could please leave your name, we will call you, we will figure this out in a little while. Is it in there? Please give me just one second. No, no, it's okay. Thank you. You're right. It was our mistake. So thank you for coming up. Um, I apologize. We're gonna put up two minutes on the board and then you can make your public comment.
Two minutes and about 30 seconds like everyone else has had. And then also when I'm done, can, oh, the gentleman is gone, but can I have two minutes and 30 seconds?
No, two minutes.
I'll talk loud. All right. So there we go. Um. We're at Dejounte Middle School. Um, everyone came down here, the BSU El Cerrito High School, they refused to take a photo with you guys. People, they talked and it kind of seems like it's kind of getting lost in whose job is it to actually coordinate this? And decide what things need to be spoken about. You have Michelle Obama on the right side says there's no magic. You got Michael Jordan left side that says, hey, he can't accept not trying. That's what's happening. You guys aren't, I mean, I don't, once again, no one knows their job description. What are you supposed to be doing? Who's supposed to organize? The BSU El Cerrito High School have been discriminated against by teachers, by staff, by faculty, and no one seems to know. You can't be completely ignorant to what's going on with inside your school district and still decide you want to represent the motherfucker. Let's be honest.
I'm sorry. No, no, there's no cursing.
Can we reframe that?
Please turn off this mic. No, no more time. Thank you so much. That is part of our protocols and our norms. Your time is over. No, sir. Thank you so much. Your time is over. Sir, we do not use personal attacks or use bad words. Students are listening and that is not part of our norms. Thank you. No, sorry, sir. That's it. No. Board, we're now moving to consent. Board, are there any additional changes to the consent calendar? Okay, board, we're gonna take one more recess. Board, I ask that you please stay on the stage. We're gonna take five minutes. We'll come back, the uh, public will come back at 7:56. Thank you.
Stand on equitable enrollment process affects the sentiments and individual enrollment plans of certain DLI families. There's a sentiment from certain families of an unwritten understanding regarding the Washington Coramatsu and El Cerrito DLI process, transfer process. This is unwritten understanding has created confusion, frustration and mistrust. Our presentation today is in hope that we can clarify, ease the anxiety of change for equity and begin to rebuild trust. I was informed, there we go, the slides are up. To clarify further, two issues have arisen. One is the number of families concerned of the El Cerrito DLI program being eliminated. To clarify, there has been no DLI teacher or course at El Cerrito since 2020. Another issue is that Washington and Coramatsu families are concerned about the path to El Cerrito.
Here we go. So we want to clarify our belief around the transfer process to El Cerrito High School. And every, our belief is simply that all students will have the opportunity to transfer to El Cerrito High School should a program exist. We also believe that all students will follow the West Contra Costa Unified School District transfer process. And all students will be allowed equitable access to El Cerrito High or any other DLI high school program. We also know that it's true that a large number of students attempt to transfer into El Cerrito High School every year through our intra-district transfer process. But they are unable to do so because of capacity. But we do believe that all students should have the opportunity to go to any of our schools in our district for specific programs.
So our rationale is based on the values of equitable practices and programming. And our context is that of school capacity and teacher vacancies. Some pointers for that rationale include the central component of English learners of DLI programs. And being able to sustain models K through 12. There was a district communication sent out in the month of January, two, to be exact. In order to share this communication and information being here addressed to DLI families. We like to emphasize that WCCUSD. Next slide, please. Next slide. Does embrace DLI and equitable DLI programs. Assuring that our conversations since the beginning of the school year have been around English learners being at the core of DLI programming. Our major goal this year is to develop a dual language immersion PAC, a parent advisory committee for a continued parent involvement. And we're super excited to finally reach a school-wide Washington K6 year. That's gonna be next year. Further commitment demonstrates that our district has grown in terms of California State Seala Bileiteracy Awardees by almost double since 2018. Within this letter, there were five, next slide, please. Frequently asked questions we hope to address. The first one is in regards.
Thank you. Can we get, go to the next slide, please? Okay, and next one. Thank you. So the first frequently asked question that has been coming up is around the transfer process. And the question is, what does it mean for a program to be a program preference option for the transfer process? And how does a district decide which programs are eligible? So our district, West Contra Costa Unified, considers program preference to be an option for the transfer process when there are academic courses available at specific school sites that are not available at a student's school of residence. For example, if a high school math course or a specific foreign language course is not available at a student's school of residence, but is available at another school site, the student is eligible to apply for a transfer to the school site where that course is available. All transfers, including those for program preference, are subject to space availability in that program. And this process is open to all West Contra Costa Unified School District students. Next slide.
Excuse me, I apologize for the interruption. I have to make just a quick announcement if I may. There is a blue Hyundai blocking someone from getting out across the street. The license plate is A G I Z zero seven zero. So if that's your car, please uh go move it because otherwise it's gonna get towed. Thank you, and I apologize, Mr. Rosco and Ms. Smiths.
No worries. Okay, we're on the current slide. So the next frequently asked question is, based on this logic, shouldn't DLI qualify for a transfer on the basis of program preference? And so the answer would be yes. Transfers are considered on the basis of program preference when there are courses that exist at a school other than a student's school of residence. In order to facilitate, facilitate an equitable transfer process, West Contra Costa Unified School District must ensure that program preference transfers are granted to students who seek to enroll in courses that are genuinely offered at that school site. We recognize that many families have made long-term plans on the basis of their students' academic program, which is why DLI will remain a program preference for the 2023-2024 school year, despite the fact that there will not be a DLI course offered at El Cerrito High School next year. Because district staff cannot reasonably anticipate that there will be a DLI course in 2024 to 2025, and as we recognize that families make long-term plans on the basis of students' academic programs, the West Contra Costa Unified School District has provided notice that DLI will not be a program preference for transfers in 2024. Next slide. So does this mean that my Coramatsu or Washington student does not have an option to continue with their peers at El Cerrito High School? No. Families are able to list any course available at a school site that is not available at their school of residence as a reason for a transfer request to another district school. Again, all transfers and, or all transfers are based on space availability and staffing. And all students have equal opportunity to apply to transfer to any of our district schools. Next slide, please.
Four. How can DLI students pursue bilingual, bilingualism even without DLI coursework? You've mentioned the Seala Bileiteracy and how we've grown in numbers in the last four years in terms of our overarching goal. And two, currently, our Office of English Learner Achievement and other departments like the College and Career Office are exploring avenues to offer high school DLI offerings in the district. Once again, this is an exploration of options. Next slide. In terms of future planning, some planning considerations have been shared in terms of focusing for a, and strengthening elementary DLI offerings, middle school DLI offerings in order to expand at the high school level. Once again, these are considerations. However, one consideration our office feels very strongly about is the creation of a PAC for DLI. A PAC is a parent advisory committee. This will help us and our district build and strengthen relationships to recruit, keep and support students, teachers and community members.
Next slide. So I just want to walk through our transfer process with you all again. And this is according to our Board Policy 5116.1. So transfer requests are considered according to the following priorities. Priority one is a sibling transfer. If a sibling, a brother or sister are attending another school, you can request a transfer, an intra-district transfer to that school based on a sibling. The second priority is parent employment. And this is open to any student whose parent or guardian is assigned to that school, that school of residence or that school area, and that's their primary place of employment. Transfer priority number three is the comprehensive support and improvement transfers. Any student enrolled in a persistently low performing district school that has been identified for comprehensive support and improvement by the state of California, you are able to apply for an intra-district transfer to another school. And then priority number four is program transfers. So again, this is open to any student who wishes to attend a school outside of their attendance area for a specific program. For example, DLI. This is if that program is not offered at your school of residence. And of course, pre- requisites may be necessary for enrollment in certain courses. Transfer priority number five is special circumstances. And then transfer priority number six is parent preference. Next slide. So again, just to reiterate the transfer process, our intra-district transfers are subject to space availability at the requested school. All requests will be considered in an unbiased random selection process according to priority to determine which students will be approved for the transfer. And the transfer process is intended to be an equitable process that allows all West Contra Costa Unified School District students access to specific schools and/or programs.
Next slide, please. Furthermore, this is a segment from 2014's hiring priorities and procedures from the district's plan for English learner achievement. Items like this are items that we look forward to talk and discuss and write down in terms of the DLI planning, hiring and procedures. Next slide. I mentioned some key next steps and I highlighted the first one in terms of it being a priority to develop relationships. And this is truly our relationships with families. Building a PAC, assuring that we communicate consistently, make connections and agree on common district-wide goals, put those agreements in writing, put that plan in writing in order for implementations and then begin to prioritize for next steps. Above all, I also want to give credit to all the parents here today and those who have worked to keep the programs of DLI here in our district. This is, bilingualism is beautiful and it's a positive story here at WCCUSD. Also want to invite parents to our MDEC and DLI Advisory Committee meetings. Now, MDEC is an official PAC. DLI is a meeting where we hope to build out that PAC in the very near future. Please attend and let's build this relationship and build this trust. Thank you. That's the end of our presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rosco and Ms. Smith. Uh, now I'm gonna pass it on to Dr. Hurst. I wanted to add a few words before we go to questions from the board.
Yes, I wanted to share with the board and with the public, those who are seated in the audience, just a few things. Um, there's been a few um things that I've been directing the staff to do moving forward. And I had a conversation with them today about this as well. Um, I'm gonna share with you that there's a number of things that we want to do in the district to really expand our course offerings and attract families from all over to come to West Contra Costa Unified School District. An example, I have talked to one of our directors, Dr. Hugh. I have talked to one of our directors, Dr. Huey, about our career technical education program. And I've directed her to ensure that we are offering pathways. In high school, middle school, but also experiences in elementary. And those are pathways aligned to industry sectors. Uh, some may call them trades, but they're really pathways aligned to industry sectors. So that's something that I've directed staff to do and something that you will see in the future, and she is aggressively working on that. There's something else that I've directed staff to do, and again, to attract. Um, those uh, from outside of our district to our district is acceleration. So I have talked to um, at services specifically. Two of our directors to ensure that there's opportunities for our students to. That can accelerate in algebra and geometry to do that. So you're gonna see that coming back as well to the board as far as acceleration and mathematics. Algebra and geometry specifically. But I also want to share with you that I believe that. Uh, our DLI programs are extremely important. And I do believe also that they would attract. From all over as CTE will and other things that we're trying to put in place. So in the conversation that I've had with staff today, I have directed them. To ensure that we have a K through twelve option. For DLI um, in. In Spanish and in Mandarin. Again, um. This is the conversation I've had with them today. We are uh, directing or I am directing staff to move forward in planning. Um, a K through twelve option in both um, Spanish and in Mandarin. So we will be moving forward with that along with the CTE option as well. As long. As well as the algebra and geometry acceleration. So I wanted to share those two pieces, but I wanted to just kind of go back for a second. Cause I have had the opportunity to speak to um, parents in the community um, about this. I do think that it is important uh. Program. Um, but also would like to share. Just about communications as well, and it's the conversation that I had with my staff. Um, I would like to, as the superintendent, apologize for any trust that has been broken. Um, in this process. And we have had a um, conversation even today about. Items such as this, big items, and how we're gonna move forward in the future. That we do bring people to the table, that we are having a collaborative conversation. Um, before moving forward and involving you in the process. So I would like to acknowledge um. That we did not do that in this process, and we will do that in future big processes. So. Again, just to be very clear. Um, I acknowledge the communication failure throughout this process. We are revisiting how we will improve collaboration in big topics such as this. And then also. Again. CTE, expect that to be K through twelve. That was a direction for me to staff. Acceleration in algebra geometry, that was a direction for me to staff. And then. K through twelve options in DLI Mandarin and Spanish, that was a direction as well. So I wanted to share with you, I am listening, we have heard what you've said. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Um, I want to apologize to the community. I know tonight has been. Very different and a little bit, a little bit disruptive and disorganized, so I want to apologize. Um, our agenda was copied wrong from an old agenda, so does not state. Ten-minute public comment for one minute, so we will do two minutes of public comment per person, since it was it was our mess up. Um, if you signed up. Um, we are not going to take public comment. Um. Uh, we're gonna take all the public comments, so we'll start with the people in person, and then we'll go to the people on Zoom. Okay.
Our first public comment is Mackenzie Guzman.
My name is Mackenzie Guzman. I am a second grader at Stewart. This is my first. Year here. I translated from a DLI charter school in Richmond. I love my school, my friends, and my DLI teacher. I love learning in Spanish. I need my teacher, my DLI teacher for next year and. The rest of my school education until I graduate high school. Thank you for listening.
Next public comment is Samantha Torres.
Buenas noches. Hello. My name is Samantha Torres. I am the mother of a fourth grader at Washington Elementary. I'm also a district sub and a uh, West Contra Costa Unified School District 711 committee member. Thank you for your efforts to negotiate a fair contract with our teachers. Thank you all for your service, because I know we are all fighting for our kids' futures, so thank you. Firstly, restore automatic intra-district transfers now for DLI pathway students now. There's no reason sixth graders at Washington should apply to transfer to Coramatsu. Or why Coramatsu eighth grader should apply to transfer to El Cerrito High School. You want to show good faith effort to restore the automatic transfer process that's been existing for years. Restore it now. Secondly, fill all teacher vacancies for the 2023-2024 school year. You have the power to do that now. Tonight, you heard from the DLI Leadership Immersion Team to address communication issues regarding challenges to transfer, changes to transfer preferences. They told you that there were communication issues in which parents erroneously believed that the El Cerrito DLI program was eliminated. And that the leadership believes that the this process, the transfer process should be equitable for all students. They brought up equity a lot, right? So. They'll present all this very matter-of-factly without actually providing data, specifically data on why. They made a unilateral decision to stop the DLI program at El Cerrito High School and why that is about achieving equity. They also won't explain how refusing to fill vacancies for it to staff a fully-staffed DLI program. And then subsequently just stopped trying to fill them, how that is achieving equity. What they won't explain, parents have been complaining about staffing levels for years. So all of a sudden, now they just don't want to fill them, and that's why we're cutting programs. They just don't want to fill them. Okay? Um, we need to hear why cutting the DLI programs is achieving equity. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Oliver Reyes.
Hi, good evening, board. Um, my name's Oliver Reyes. I have a son in sixth grade at Washington Elementary and a son in 10th grade at El Cerrito High School. Both have been in the DLI program since kindergarten. So we've been involved in the DLI program going on 11 years. Many other families, teachers and educators have worked hard for 10, 15 or more years. To improve and grow DLI in our school district. So when we learned that the district made the decision to scale back the program, ended at eighth grade. And not provide a DLI pathway to high school, it was a stab in the back. The way that this transpired without any communication or involvement with the families and teachers who are invested in this program leaves the district suspect. The district didn't even send out letters in advance to let us know that shortening the DLI program was under consideration. And you're right, this creates distrust and creates enemies, and thank you for acknowledging that. But we still need to know why this decision was made and who was involved. The district made these decisions without any input from families that will be affected. We know that. What we want, we want to know what effort has been made to staff DLI teachers at El Cerrito High. What recruiting was actually done. The district says that it cannot reasonably. Anticipate that there will be a DLI course in 2024 to 2025. Why are there no openings currently advertised on the district website for high school DLI teachers? It appears that the district has has given up on high school DLI. The district is prioritized, says says they're prioritizing elementary grades. But prioritizing prioritizing elementary grades does not preclude staffing DLI teachers. High school DLI teachers, both can be done with effort. There may be qualified teachers who prefer to teach at the high school level. We need to see a diligent effort made to provide DLI courses at El Cerrito High. We want the K through twelve pathway reinstated immediately.
Our next public comment is Marlene Finagui Munoz.
Hi, board. Thank you so much uh, for having us. I'll keep my comments brief. Um. I I just want to continue to express frustration. We have heard the same presentation multiple times. I appreciate what you all are doing, but we keep getting spoken very slowly about the transfer process. I understand the transfer process. What I don't understand is who made these changes? Why did we not adequately staff the DLI program and grow it in El Cerrito? Whose job was it to take care of that program and who didn't do it? Who is going to take responsibility for the DLI program moving forward? I understand what you're saying about the transfer process. I don't want to hear about it anymore. I want, we have sent you questions. And we have not gotten answers. It's so frustrating. It's just. You keep talking about equity. I see equity in your slides. I like equity too. Tell us how we're not being equitable so we can address it. We we can hear that and we can understand it. Help us understand. When you write equity and you underline it, make sure your bullet points actually talk about how to make it equitable. So I understand everyone should get a chance to go to El Cerrito High. I I get that. I'm all for that, but what happened to the program that we were told about when we decided to take our child from over there? To over here because we thought we were going down a pathway. Uh, so. I I just want more clear communication. These PowerPoints are frustrating. We're being talked to slowly, but our questions are not being answered. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Claudia Jimenez. Claudia Jimenez.
I see that she's on Zoom now, so I think maybe she left. Would you like to call her on Zoom? Yes, thank you.
Ms. Claudia Jimenez, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Claudia Jimenez. I am a Richmond City Council and a. Parent of two uh, kids, and one is in Coramatsu. Uh, what I what we are hearing today is that. Um, I believe the plan should be to expand the DLA program and add other language programs. But instead, what parents are here, we are hearing is that the DLA program in El Cerrito High School will be eliminated. The way that this is presented is very disappointing. When the only plan. The only language program that is right now in the district is going to be eliminated in one of the highest school. I really, I am glad to hear that other language programs are being considered. But the message that this board is sending to parents is that there is no plan to expand anything. And in contrast, the plan is to eliminate. One, the DLA and reducing the DLA program in the high school, so there is no path for our kids. That are now in the Coramatsu to continue the DLA program. And when this district with a. Majority or just a a high percentage of Latinx families. Uh, what you are doing here is sending a wrong message to these families. Uh, I I don't think equity eh, is considered here when what you are saying is that. We you are going to eliminate what the only program that is there. I would like to see a plan that is saying, not only we are going to have DLA programs. In these three, but it should be in all the 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 schools. And in a step, you are taking it out from one of the the highest schools. Uh, thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Allison Natchman. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I am a parent of a sixth grader at Washington and a 10th grader at El Cerrito High School. And I am thrilled to hear you say tonight in the presentation that you want to restore trust. If you really want to restore trust, then I implore you to please. Restore the K through twelve pathway from Washington to El Cerrito High School now. You need to find the teachers now. If you want to restore trust, this is the first action that should be happening. Clarify the plan. Keep your commitment. Keep your promise to the parents and children. Who have committed years and years of their lives and planned their lives to this program. Please restore the K through twelve pathway. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Ellie Vargas. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Uh, so my name's Ellie Vargas. I'm the mother of a fifth grader and a second grader at Washington Elementary. We also transfer across town specifically for Washington's DLI program. Uh, I am beyond thrilled that Washington has, for the first time since my family has been at the school, a principal who specifically wants to support and grow a DLI program. And I thank the board again for supporting that uh, earlier this year. Uh, as you've heard, now is not the time to scale back DLI across this district. We've invested so much in elementary. We've got a strong pipeline of students coming through, yes, at Washington, but also at Stewart and other dual-language schools across the district. Merging these programs together at the high school level only gives more credence to supporting the K-12 pipeline. Thank you, Superintendent, for your words in support of that tonight. You. You don't know how much that means to hear that directly from you. And so my question is, why remove DLI as a program preference for transfer for the 24-25 school year? As opposed to trying to shore it up now, hiring teachers now. We have more than a year to do that. Um, and again, even more so with the superintendent's direction. Um, I'm really troubled to learn that since 2019, the district has not been proactively creating job postings specifically for DLI teachers. How can we hire if we aren't creating the postings? In light of the national teacher shortages, let's expand the hiring window for DLI. I'm glad to see on those slides earlier that we are gonna proactively work on partnering with international teaching programs. I think that's a great idea, and it's worked in the past. But without teachers, of course, our programs will not attract enrollment, and that is not a reason to stop offering it at the high school level. I will again echo Marlen's frustrations about the recent misleading and confusion communication. We need to do better. Um, and we need to rebuild the trust for better collaboration. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Shalon Santiago. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, board. Um. I am, wow, I'm surprised. Um, Hurst, you really, uh, you blew the whistle there. You have been saying that you're such a such a support of DLI. But you just told us your ulterior motive. We I, we all had an inkling that you weren't all on board and. And you had another reason, and that was kind of why you're ignoring Stewart in particular, you're ignoring some of the challenges we faced. But you just showed your hand. You just said that you're looking and focusing on another program, another program that our school doesn't have. Why would you focus on a program that our school does not have, when, I mean, our district does not have? When you should be strengthening the programs we have. Why would you think to do that? That makes no sense. Everyone knows you need to build a foundation before you build the the building. So why are you not building the foundation of DLI, a program you have? A program that you have in, what, 10 schools? No, you're gonna go create a whole nother program and create a whole nother pathway for a whole nother program that you're gonna end up closing after a few years? Come on, Hurst. Come on. You could do better than that, right? You just showed your hand. Parents and family in the community, don't believe what he's saying. He just lied to your faces. He's not a supporter of DLI. His actions are way stronger than his words. Thank you and good night.
Our next public comment is Sarah Coles. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Sarah Coles. I've spoken to some of you personally and to the board as well. I am a parent of a student who started in kindergarten and is now at El Cerrito High School. I'm also a parent of a student who is at Cora Matu, who started at kindergarten in the Washington school. I am also a teacher at Washington, so I hold two hats as well. I want to thank you, Dr. Hurst, for making a commitment, again echoing what other people said, that it's a K-12 commitment. This is the first time that we're hearing there is a commitment. However, I'm nervous because it says it's a K-12 commitment option. And what I'm nervous about what the other person said as well is, is that we already have a K-12 option. It's El Cerrito High School. And when we talk all the time about involving all stakeholders, our stakeholders were not involved when they decided to eliminate the DLI program in El Cerrito. And I think that's where the mistrust came from initially, is that all of a sudden the program is gone. And it's been gone and maybe we didn't know about it, or maybe we didn't understand what that meant. But now all of a sudden, they're saying that they will honor transfers if there is a class that will be offered. Well, it seems suspicious to me and maybe makes me nervous as well, that maybe they're just not going to offer the class and just say, oh, you tried to get in, but we don't have that class. If they don't create classes, then how are we going to be able to make those transfers happen? I think that mistrust comes from putting a Band-Aid on something and saying, well, we, we have this process in place and we're really sorry, but it just doesn't exist there. So again, I really am asking that we keep the program that is already there or supposed to be there or was promised to be there, which is a K-12 Washington or any DI to Cora Matu to El Cerrito. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Nora Ponce Calhoun. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. I've been lucky enough to have a conversation with quite a bit of the board and also Dr. Hurst in regards to the actual program itself. I have a continued concern with the fact that you guys keep highlighting equitable underlying in it, making it apparent that that's what you're reaching for, but at no point have you actually involved the community in the decision. That is not equitable. You are not actually listening to the people that you claim to be serving. It's just a huge issue for me. Rather than expanding the DLI program so it is equitable for everybody, the entire community, you're actually eliminating part of the pathway. An option is not enough. That's not a trackway. That's not a pathway. That's not ensuring that it'll actually continue. If anything, you're actually regressing. My whole thing is that a second language, whether it's Mandarin, whether it's Spanish or anything else, should be available for the entirety of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. What you are doing is backtracking. You are leaving our children at a deficit. Something that they could pick up in elementary school and then continue on with another language to service their community, to service their job, is something you are taking away from them without any input from those heavily involved. I want a trackway. I want a pathway that gives all of our children the opportunity to go further in life. This is not where it's at. We keep seeing the slides with the same regurgitated information with data. How is it being applied? Where does our input go? And when is it going to expand? If you have issues hiring in the future, you don't see that as a potential, start hiring now. Because I haven't actually seen any positions being put out there to hire for them. Service the entire community the way you're meant to.
And our last public comment is Danielle Navarro. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Danielle Navarro and a parent of two students at Stewart in the DLI program. And another one that may be attending TK next school year. I'm also educator in this district for over 15 years. Thank you, Dr. Hurst, for making those commitments just moments ago. However, I want to put Stewart back on your radar. When Stewart, Stewart was great, it was really great. I was proud that my kids went to Stewart. The issue is that as the years have gone by, things seem to have been dwindling. The lack of teachers, the lack of vision, transparency and the promise of the pathway not being followed through. I ask you put attention, focus, resources back into Stewart. Come down and attend their celebrations, visit the students, post pictures and write about all the good things happening at Stewart. When I signed up my sons for, my eldest now a fifth grader into the DLI program at Stewart, I was told that this DLI program would go on to, go up to the eighth grade and they even talked about it continuing to the high school. DLI at Stewart for the middle school grades six through eighth is now an elective. This is due to the lack of teachers, the DLI teachers, and as well as the changes in district leadership. Stewart got lost in the shuffle and forgotten about. Restore DLI K through eight for Stewart. Let's come together with the parent input and plan for the future Stewart DLI. Thank you, Mr. Rosko and Dr. Hurst for leading this with the PAC idea with the, the parent committee. Thank you again.
Thank you so much to everybody who made the public comment. Thank you to our staff for their presentation as well. Board, we're going to move now to questions. We're going to do four questions on the first round. If we need to do more, we'll, we'll check in at that point. So again, four questions, three minute comments at the end. Who would like to go start with questions? No questions? Oh, trustee Reckler.
So I'll start. Thank you very much for the presentation and thank you for the public comment. Dr. Hurst, would you or somebody on your team, please describe current recruiting habits, tactics, methods that are in place now to find DLI teachers?
Good afternoon, good evening Board. Currently, we're recruiting for all designations. B-CLAD teachers are very hard and difficult to find because it requires an additional authorization. We have our recruitment teams currently in Reno this evening, preparing for our job fair in the morning. Next week, we go to Fresno and Riverside and the county office of Ed will be hosting a job fair. Also currently, we just signed an agreement with Dominican University to support our residency program for 20 spots. They are currently working on getting the B-CLAD authorization added to their school so that we can have some candidates available to receive the B-CLAD through them. Also, we are working with Sonoma State to see how we can get student teachers with B-CLADS available to the, to our district. Also, I would like to develop a recruitment committee to help us develop strategies for these hard to fill positions. And also, our main source of recruitment for the last few years has been through the California Department of Education, which they have had us meet with Mexico and Spain consulates to pull international teachers in. And in the beginning, this program was really successful and we were able to get a lot of teachers. But due to COVID, the numbers dwindled. Last year, we were only able to hire two teachers. So hopefully this year, with the help of Mr. Rosko, we have met with the consulate already. And so we're preparing to have teachers come in internationally this year as well. And so we are all HR and, and all our teams, we are always exploring pathways to build and hire our DLL, DLI programs throughout the district. So this is our, one of our highest priorities as well as all of our vacancies to make sure we have highly qualified teacher in every classroom. And so thank you. Are there any other questions for me?
I do. So specifically for El Cerrito High School, although Ed Join is not the only place to do recruiting, why is there no ad for El Cerrito High School for a B-CLAD educator on Ed Join?
Because we're currently going through staffing allocations and so we're still discussing that at this time. So do they? We're working on staffing allocations, which each site receives what their FTE allotment is. And so we're working with all staffing sites on that right now.
So there's no staffing allocation for El Cerrito High School?
We're currently working on it with staff to finalize.
Okay. Next question is, Dr. Hurst, you made a commitment to building out a K-12 pathway. Thank you. I was just told I couldn't be heard. I'm sorry about that. Dr. Hurst, you said you were committed to building out a K-12 pathway. Yet it says in the PowerPoint, should a program exist? So would you please be able to describe what that fulcrum is or what that, what, what's going to, what does, should a program exist mean in, in concrete terms?
So this is a conversation we just engaged in today about the K through 12. I think in the presentation, we did not have an opportunity to really adjust any of the language in there. So they're just hearing this for the first time. So what the plan is, is that we are collaborating together with the community to really think about K through 12 option for DLI in Spanish and Mandarin, what that's going to look like.
Okay, thank you. Finally, just coming back to recruiting one more time.
Sorry, trustee Reckler, that was four questions. We'll come back to you. No, don't worry about it. We'll come back to you though after this round. Board, are there any other questions? Okay, well, it looks like it's you, me, trustee Reckler. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Rosko, could you please share a little bit more about the vision for the high schools? And what does, what does an actual DLI program in secondary look like?
The vision should be created with a PAC. We have explored other DLI districts that contain a DLI high school offering. It does not look like what we have or had a couple of years ago. So now under our current context, these are the, these are the, our context conversations we need to have. Under our current context, how can we build our K-12 pathway program offerings district wide for all of our DLI families? And this has been a conversation at hand. I know there was Stewart families here today and Cora Matu, Washington families here today and all the families who emailed me that are not from those schools. I also include in this messaging as well in terms of their vision to continue the dual language immersion program.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could go deeper. Just pretend that I am not, pretend that I don't know anything about DLI, even though I have a master's in bilingual education. But tell me, what is, for, for a family member that doesn't know what a DLI looks like? When they get to a high school that's offering DLI, what does that look like? Is it just AP Spanish or is it a, if dual bilingual program where there are an English and Spanish classes? Like what does it actually look like so that we can picture it in our minds?
I love your dreaming question. I'm a dreamer as well. I think we have a lot of dreamers here. If it's okay to talk about dreams, understand that those are considerations we're having with our community since we all have a, a very a very way to see what that vision is. I will speak for myself. However, I want to make sure that this is my vision. And my vision is not the one that matters here. It's a conversation with that PAC to ensure that we build that vision together. I will mention that several programs do work toward having multiple course offerings at the secondary level. Not only Spanish. And you can see this in terms of the structure at the elementary level, which we're reviewing currently in terms of our context, in terms of what percentage should that language balance be? And where should Spanish, Mandarin, English be considered in terms of the content being delivered? And those are questions we have to review. There's ideal scenarios where we slowly go up in the process and under our context and in past meetings, so this is public knowledge, certain schools have been able to adapt to a 50/50 model. And that's the current context a lot of schools are in currently.
Thank you. So the program in El Cerrito that existed prior to 2019, what did that look like?
No, I, I'll, I'll mention a little bit about that. So our secondary programs, not only El Cerrito, are held by one teacher. And talking about vision and dreaming, we have to have more than one teacher hold the program. That's part of our conversations with the PAC in terms of how do we prioritize partnering teachers? And how programs are not delivered by a single teacher, even though that teacher is delivering a variety of content areas. Doctor, future conversations for vision planning.
I just wanted to add that teacher that was at El Cerrito was teaching only history DLI.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else have questions? Clerk Smith Fols.
When you want to build up the K through eight DLI, when you want to strengthen that, can you tell me what that would look like? What does it mean to strengthen that part of the DLI program?
I'll share the conversations we've had in our prior meetings, DLI meetings earlier this year. That's a little bit of the data we've shared in terms of how can we strengthen programs through professional development for teachers or DLI teachers, new and current? How we can find ways to partner with other DLI teachers in schools to share resources, planning and be creative in terms of curriculum planning? Those relationships is the root of strong DLI programming. So it's not a DLI curriculum in a sense. It's those relationships that truly matter in terms of strong programming.
Thank you so much. My second question is currently do DLI programs speak together? For example, do each DLI school come together to have conversations? Is that something that you're thinking about when you're thinking about establishing a PAC? Are you thinking about establishing like a cohort of all the DLI schools so they can come together and share their experience and their concerns, wants, needs and successes?
Yes. Thank you for that question. We didn't mention it here, but typically we do mention it at our DLI meeting in terms of a DLI guiding principles that should guide all school sites, district conversations on building strong DLI programs. And sometimes the decisions that need to be made together in terms of prioritization. There's, I can't remember the principles off the hand, but they include curriculum review, entry exit criteria that's clearly stated, assessment, planning, curriculum, planning time. Roll out balanced classrooms and not only in terms of language percentage, but also including English learners. And that's been, a lot of those focused topics were topics prior to these conversations that were occurring prior to build up the belief that I have a PAC this year.
Thank you so much. My third question is, can you tell me strategies or conversations that you're having with your staff about how do you intentionally recruit, retain and support Black students in DLI programs?
We have, we have discussed it within our team in terms of what we can do in terms of how to support schools in the recruitment and assure that there's equal access for all families, including African-American students.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. President Gonzalez-Loy uncomplete.
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, I do have one more question, Mr. Rosko. Two more questions, if you don't mind. The first one, going back to my question before about what it would look like in El Cerrito. I heard in the answer that we only had one teacher, right? I'm trying to understand. Uh, I'm trying to understand the actual program that was offered before so that we can provide context to our community. What, so I hear the teacher taught history in Spanish. That was the only thing that she taught. So is that really considered a dual immersion program on the secondary? Yes or no? And what would an actual one look like? Like in other districts, what does it look like?
It, it's a confusing question for the fact that some folks do consider it that and some folks do not. I'm at the stance that we need to strengthen our programs. If, if that's what you're asking, if that's an acceptable, like, yeah, that's exactly what I want. Again, the answer would be on my end, no. That would not be the exact plan is not to go back to what we used to have. I believe from the feedback we received, uh, folks were also unhappy with that particular, uh, strength of that program.
Okay, thank you. Um, shifting gears just for a second. A few years ago, we got rid of TBE so that we would do a shift to DLI. Uh, for those that don't know, in the public transitional bilingual education, which I was an educator about on. Um, and we had that in most of our Flatland schools where we had a lot of high population of Latino students, newcomer students, Spanish speaker students. Now, when we transitioned, Downer, my understanding was supposed to become a DLI school as well. Could you talk of what happened to Downer and where is it now?
So, uh, by a couple of years ago, I think maybe four or five years ago, there was a shift in terms of a decision district-wide to remove the term TBD for a deficit mindset. In terms of the work that has happened between now and then, I cannot speak of. Uh, I was not in this particular role. I will say that continued conversations in terms of what strong DLI programs are have been had. And the term or coined philosophy of Dr. Jose Medina has been, uh, an author of the guiding principles who were following his trajectory of work. And assuring that we're not creating DLI light programs. And this is the self-reflection that we need to do as a community, not only as a director, but as a community, as a school uh, to determine, okay, what are we doing great? Cause we are doing a lot of great stuff. And at the same time, what can we do better? And how, how can we work together to get there? Uh, we're using those guiding principles to assure that we're not only a, a DLI school by name, which sometimes we, we can look at it in that way and be proud of the DLI schools we're doing and and demonstrate that strength other, to attract families to go to DLI schools as well.
Okay, thank you. Board, we're gonna now transition to comments. Um, is there anyone who'd like to start us? Oh, sorry, again, we have three minutes for board member. Comments, we're gonna do comments, sorry. No, no one has comments? Oh, trustee Phillips, we'll start with you.
You, you said it's three minutes? Okay, right there, thank you. So our DLI programs have been hot issues for a long time. Uh, Dr. Hurst, this these issues predate you, but you have been here for a few years now. So they're yours. Uh, but you did not create them. And one of the things that spurs, I think, these issues on, um, is we don't have frank conversations. Uh, um, community members get mad instead of having frank conversations. And I'm not saying this is what happened tonight, but I've seen it, so I know this happens. Community members get mad instead of having a frank conversations, we make more promises. We then can't live up to the promises. They get mad again, and then we make more promises. And it's a cycle. Um, the past superintendent, I'm not advocating for this, but this is an example, the past superintendent thought about closing the DLI program at Stewart. But that was never a, a, a conversation. And I get it. When you have to have these kind of conversations, there are going to be people on both sides of the issue. There are going to be people upset, but the reason that these problems linger and snowball is because the conversations are not had. So so, so if there's something that we can't do, then we need to tell the parents, we can't do it. And we need to tell them honestly why we can't do it. And when they push back, we need to be prepared to answer the questions. At the same time, parents, if you push back and you get a reasonable answer that actually makes sense, we don't always get what we want. But the point is that we have to have the conversation and in that it has to actually be authentic. And it's not just DLI where we have this issue. We have this issue with safety. We have this issue with braces that we, I mean, the lack of authentic conversation, the lack of difficult conversation, because it's not just about authentic, it's, it's difficult conversations, but these are things that we have to grapple with. I'm gonna stop because that should not have taken me three minutes to say, but I needed to say it because we will never move forward unless we began to have authentic but difficult conversations. And that we're all willing to be pushed against and tested, but to receive if the information is there.
Trustee Rickler, you can go.
Thank you. So first, I want to thank Dr. Hurst for your apology and for setting the communication straight. You know, I'm really not one to be sharp in these meetings, but I do want to echo that to you and your staff and the community that the communication around this was below any minimal standard that I have for our district and for our parents. And I need you to know that, and we talked, we talked about it before, but um, you know, we, we can't, we just can't. It's not fair. The second thing I want to address is promise. And you see these signs out here that say promises made, promises kept. And I'm always a little skeptical about that. It's like, right, yeah, like, all right. So I called up a former board member who was on the, this board. And I had a frank conversation with Todd Groves, and I said, just tell me about the DLI program. And through the course of his conversation, unprovoked, I didn't ask him, was there a promise? He said, a promise was made to the community to have a K-12 pathway because it would stabilize the school, create a cohort, and build some momentum to get the program going. So in fact, when they tell you that there is a promise, there is. Now, I am very happy to hear that there is going to be a K-12 commitment. It's actually really important because Spanish and Mandarin are languages that our kids absolutely have to know. It is not it is no longer optional for any of us to speak one language. So the United States has the second largest population of Spanish speakers in the world. Mexico is the largest. And the way the data is trending by twenty fifty, one in three people in the United States are going to speak Spanish. That's in their lifetime. This is real. Those kids out there, they're going to be in the prime of their life. And businesses are clamoring for Spanish speakers. And if you are on track for medical school and you speak Spanish, you are just green-lighted because medical schools know what's coming and who needs to be served. So if you want to work in national security, anybody who works in national security is going to tell you that you must speak Mandarin. It's actually, we need to keep our country safe, and there's going to be a lot more China balloons flying around, and we need people who know how to diffuse those situations. All of our district graduate, graduate profiles talk about competent leaders, culturally competent leaders, good communicators, being uh, multilingual is definitely a part of that. The program is not equitable. It is not. But I don't see it as cutting it back. I see is expanding it. So every community needs to have a K-12 pathway. Every single one. It shouldn't just be for El Cerrito. It should be at Pinole. It should be at Richmond. It should be at Kennedy because maybe I could get two extra seconds from the clapping. Um, so there's, there's no magic bullet here. It's just gonna take a lot of hard work and you know, let's, let's dig in and, and make it happen. It's a way to attract people to the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Christian.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, weigh in on we want to make sure that all of our kids get a good quality, you know, uh, education from K to twelve. Uh, and we cannot be like partial. We got one section of the, the community over here gets in and this session don't get nothing. Everybody should be getting the full benefit of ed- education, or else we cheating our kids out of their education. And, um, and, and I'm gonna just say this. It, it, it starts in elementary. And if we don't build the elementary, make sure they get the things they need, you know, uh, speaking different languages in our early age, then when they get older, it, in other words, they need to know that stuff now and work on it now. But we, we have not been equity or equitable in everything we've been doing. We only want certain areas to get certain things and other areas go without. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it right. And make sure we do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Do you have a point of order?
I was gonna ask if I could have an additional thirty seconds.
No, sir. We, we only have three minutes each. Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds.
Thank you, uh, President Gonzalez-Hoye. Thank you for the presentation. I think that this is the opportune time to talk about how we have to be the same behind closed doors that we are in front of the people on the dais. We cannot be people pleasers and inauthentic because we think that it moves our political agenda. If you believe in a program and you believe in equity and you believe in all children, do that behind the scenes and in front of the people who you are trying to retain their vote. We need to make sure that we are being the trustees of the entire district. We need to ensure that all of our students are treated with respect and valued and are respected in their learning environments. If we want to have a K-12 pathway, then let's put that pathway, as trustee Ruckler just said, it doesn't have to be in El Cerrito. That take K-12 pathway can be anywhere in the district, and we can strengthen all parts of the district. And I think that's a way that we can lead in equity and we can lead in transparency. We can lead in understanding and we can lead in value. I urge the board to remove the mask that we wear in front of the people who we think we have to please and be sure that we are now just servers. We are not people pleasers. We are authentic and we're transparent and we're honest and we're serving them at all times because we're being honest with them. Dr. Hurst, thank you for your work and thank you to your staff for their work. Board, this is on us. We have the ability to be the leaders in this district. We have the ability to be the change agents in this district, but we cannot do it when we are one way in front and we are another way in the back. Be authentic and be who we say we are. President Gonzalez-Hoye, I am complete.
Thank you, clerk Smith Folds. Uh, trustee Barron.
Yeah, um, I'm glad that there's more somewhat transparency happening and progress being made. But like we've heard today, um, programs, pathways, like DLI, they're they're unique, they're special, but they shouldn't be special. They, we've heard it already, they need to be everywhere. And we were talking about being equitable and being fair and making sure our students have every opportunity that they can get and that they can achieve, every student in this district, because we serve them. We work for this community and we, we serve this community. And doing that means ensuring that our students, knowing English or not, knowing Spanish or not, they get every opportunity that they need and that they can have access to. And that ensures they shine and that they go on to do bigger, brighter things in their life. And programs like DLI is a program that ensures that students have those opportunities and go on to do much more than they're doing now or that. Programs like DLI are things that uh, my first language was Spanish. I know trustee Santos's first language is Spanish. Students like us who went through learning English in school and learning, having these kinds of programs, that's why we're here today. That's why we're here, being able to serve our community, to advocate for our peers, for our teachers, for our schools. Without those kinds of programs, these opportunities, we would not be here. And other students across the district would not be where they are without programs like DLI. And when it comes to being equitable, transparent, I hope we can always do that. Going further along, wherever we go, continue doing that for everything we do because we serve this community. They do not serve us. We serve them. As we continue, I hope that we can continue being transparent, way more transparent than we have ever been than right now, more transparent, honest and truthful, and continue supporting these students and giving them the opportunities that they're right there. We can do it. We can do it. If we wanted to, we would do it and we can do it and we all know we can. So the answer is there.
Thank you, trustee Barron. Trustee Santos.
Um, thank you. Uh, for starters, I just want to thank everybody here just for continuously coming out and voicing what you guys want to hear, not only voicing concerns, but also voicing solutions. So really thank you for that. And I, I'm glad to hear that everyone up here is claiming to be in support of DLI. And I'm glad that, you know, trustee Kaylee and I, trustee Barron here, we fully, you know, support DLI. We agree with this. Like, as she mentioned, we are first, like, you know, our first language is Spanish. We have gone through similar programs. It has helped us. However, everybody that is here today, including trustee Barron and myself, are advisory. Our voice here is of course advisory. The people who truly have power and who can truly change the course of what is going on is each and every one of you. And I really appreciate what, um, trustee Smith Folds said about being the same behind closed, look, behind closed doors. Because that is where you guys have the opportunity to really bring that forward and really make the change that we are claiming that we want to see. The change that we are pretty much begging for, the change that everybody out here is begging for. And you all have the power to bring that forward. And if you are claiming that that is what you want, then we hope that behind closed doors, you hold those claims and you continue to build on them and listen to what people are saying and what people want in order to get there. Many people here have brought solutions. People on Zoom have brought solutions. We are trying to pose the same like statements. And we hope that what you're saying now remains the same when you guys are making those decisions and when you guys are sitting down and talking about what needs to be done. And then I think one more thing that I hope can happen more if it isn't already happening, because from the sounds of everything, it doesn't seem to be happening, is conversations actually being had one-on-one with these people, with these parents, with educators, even with students. Because I think we serve as testament that even students can give you guys good insight. All the little kids that come up, even they can give you good insight on what they want to see and what they want to know. And I think moving forward, those conversations that we have mentioned need to be had if they aren't already. By the sounds of a lot of things, it doesn't seem like they're happening. And if they are, they aren't happening enough. Um, I think that's kind of it for my time, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Santos. Um, for my comments, I'll just say a couple of things. Um, so just like our student trustees, I came to the United States when I was fourteen years old. Not saying that's when you guys came to the United States, but um, also an immigrant, a bilingual student, a bilingual teacher. I taught in our district bilingual education. And I have seen how our programs have continuously failed our students. And that's what you inherited, Dr. Hurst, and much our staff as well, right? The reality is that El Cerrito did not have a DLI program. Right? I'll tell you all that because that's my background. Right? So even before two thousand nineteen, right? So promises, no promises. The reality is that students were not being given a DLI program. The reality is that students were not being given a DLI program, right? So the challenge is how do, how do we, knowing that information can move forward and serve our students? And I appreciate what Dr. Hurst said and what staff said tonight. And I think that we have to continue to strengthen our programs because I have seen how they failed our students in the past. I really worried about, so we're talking about Washington and we weren't talking about Stewart. And as much as I 100% believe and appreciate and support those programs, I worry about everyone in between. Because promises were made that the TB program was going to transition to DLI programs in the Flatland schools like Downer and Dover and Bayview and Lincoln and Stige and all these schools that show that that's really where students are falling through the cracks. Right? And we're not having the conversation about those programs. We need to have a conversation about those programs because those are students who are actually failing every day in our system. Right? And we need to have the conversation about newcomers. How we strengthen that? I'm not saying we shouldn't have the conversation about DLI and the pathway for 12. That's not what I'm saying. Well, we having hundreds of students every day that come to school and are failing. Failing because they don't speak the language, failing because they're not being given the supports. And that's not the fault of staff. The reality is that we live in a school district with a lot of need. But we need to have those conversations. I think that I really appreciate what Dr. Said, Dr. Hurst said. We need to partner with our community, fix our DLI program, but we really need to have a conversation about how are we supporting the schools that are falling through the cracks? Right? So I put this challenge to all of us and to our district. What are we doing with the other 21 schools? Who lost their program that at least supported some of the Latino students that came from across other countries and they're not getting those supports anymore. Right? When they got the supports, that's how I got my advocacy. I came to the board meeting 12 years ago and I asked, why are we doing a program that's failing students? And the board at the time could not answer that question. Right? So so what are we doing today? Doesn't matter what happened in the past, what are we going to do today? The reality is that we have to allow our staff to do that work and bring us solutions. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to move forward. Oh, Dr. Hurst, yes, you're you're last. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to just clarify a couple of things. One, there was a a public comment that shared uh, about programs that we're bringing in and why bringing those programs, not just focus on DLI. Uh, just to clarify, CTE, career technical education has been part of our district for a while. Um, and it is aligned to industry sector. I do believe that we could do both and we should be doing the CTE, DLI and more to attract families to our school district. We are declining in enrollment. That is real for West Contra Costa. So I just wanted to clarify for that one person that came on for a public comment that we are going to be expanding K through 12 pathways and we are going to be looking at a DLI option in Spanish and Mandarin. I also want to be very clear. When I shared that commitment, you're not going to hear me make promises that we can't keep. Uh, the person indicated also that um, that I was lying. I do not lie. So I wanted to make that very clear to everyone. You did not hear me mention a school and I shared that with my staff as well. Um, our commitment is to make sure that we're sitting down and having tough conversations with the community. Um, I'm not going to stand before a community or staff and make promises that we cannot keep. And I think that that has happened too often in the past. I'm not here to do that. What we will do, as I shared, I am committed and my staff is committed to making sure that we communicate effectively. We did not do that this time around. So we're going to work on that process and making sure that we do better and we bring people into the conversation. That will happen. Um, one of our trustees, trustee Phillips, talked about having hard conversations. We are prepared to do that. We are going to engage with the community. We are going to move forward K through 12 pathways, aligned to industry sectors and DLI as well. And we will, I will be prepared to have the really tough conversations. And as uh, trustee Phillips said, we will be able to respond uh, to you as well. So I just wanted to clarify those few things. I wouldn't want anyone walking away thinking that here we go again, superintendent is lying. That's not the case. I don't lie. And we are moving forward as I shared, improving communications, K through 12 pathway, DLI and CTE as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst, and thank you, everybody for coming tonight. Uh, as we discussed earlier, we're going to actually move fairly fairly quickly through our action items. Uh, and we're not having comments from the board at the end of the night. Uh, so for the next action item is E1, which we do need to have a public hearing. So the item is adoption of resolution number 2223 slash 44, authorizing adoption of the new state's statutory level one school facilities fees on residential, commercial slash industrial and senior housing construction. So I'll open the 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 public hearing. Staff, do we have any public comment? And and public who is on Zoom, I see some hands. This is uh, talking specifically about E1, the facilities item.
Our first public comment is Andrea T. Please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record. Oh, she got on. Uh, Ms. Jean Kinster, please unmute yourself.
Hello, I would just like to make the comment that it's hard to make comments when you don't fully know what the item is or have any summary or anything, just putting that out there.
Thank you so much. Okay, board. Without objection, I move the item for approval. So moved. Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, we're moving to E. Oh, I'm sorry, I closed the publics. Thank you. And um, so adopted. We're going to move to E2, 2022 Comprehensive Coordinator Early Intervention Services Plan. Without objection, we're going to move it for approval. Do you have an objection, trustee Smith Folds?
No, President Gonzalez, I was just going to make sure that we ask for public comment and then
Thank you so much. Thank you for the reminder. Um, public. The next item is E2, uh, the spent, uh, excuse me. Comprehensive Coordinator Early Intervention Services Plan. If there's any public comment on the item, please raise your hand.
Ms. Jean Kinster, please unmute yourself.
Did I unmute?
We can
Okay, again, not fully knowing what this is, I'm hoping it's something along the lines of providing support in the classrooms for the TKK 123 and not waiting until three or four to get supports when kids need help with whatever it is, math, language arts. But we don't have supports in the classrooms for those lower grades. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board, without any objection, if there are no objections, we'll approve this item. So moved. Thank you. Okay, item. So approved. I E3 provisional internship permits, PIP permits. We've done this a few times with are there, is there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Uh, with no objections, board, we'll move this item. Okay, thank you. So approved. Okay, public, our next scheduled board meeting. Sorry, clerk Smith Folds. You had a a motion.
May I move to adjourn the meeting, President Gonzalez?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry, President Gonzalez, may I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'm not seconding it. I was trying to get your attention as well. So I'll wait till you call on me.
Thank you. I'm going to second. Okay, no discussion?
There's no discussion on a motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's move to a vote. Trustee Santos. There's no comment for this motion. Trustee Santos, vote.
Trustee Santos abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Barron.
Trustee Barron abstain.
Thank you. Clerk Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Christian.
Stay.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, no.
Did you vote no? Uh, trustee Phillips?
No.
Okay, and my votes are yes, since we had already agreed on it. So the vote fails. Trustee Phillips?
I just wanted to make a comment um, in closing comments for the board.
Yeah, we got, we decided not to do public comment because of what happened earlier. So we're not doing public, we're not doing comments from the board tonight.
When did we decide?
We decided that while you were not in the meeting.
We took a vote that we were not have word.
We did not. I, as the president, made the decision. If you would like to challenge it, you're welcome to, but it would require four votes for you to challenge it. You were not in the meeting.
So I just, can I ask the parliamentary question, just to make it easier for me?
No.
I can't ask the parliament.
No, we're moving forward. Do you have a motion? Okay, board. I'm at next board of education meeting is March 1. I'm adjourning the meeting. Thank you so much.